How's it going, Officer Furuley Rochelle Park?
Hey, what's up, man? How are you?
You have the insurance? Everything alright tonight, man?
Yeah, man, just heading home.
Yeah, from where?
Uh, from my friend's house.
Where's that at?
Uh, Elmwood Park.
Alright. So, we're here to shut the car off real quick.
Please click the subscribe button and press the bell icon to get notifications.
Shut it off?
Yeah, shut the car off. Drop on out.
Help it out?
Yep. Just gonna stay on the sidewalk so we can talk. Where are you coming from tonight, sir?
Uh, just my friend's house.
Okay, where's your friend?
Elmwood Park. Elmwood Park?
Elmwood Park?
Yeah.
What time did you leave your friend's house?
Excuse me?
What time did you leave your friend's house?
Thirty minutes ago.
Thirty minutes ago?
Yeah.
What'd you do while you were there?
Just hang out.
Hang out?
Yeah.
Okay. Tired?
I mean, yes, three in the morning, yeah.
Did you fall asleep at the light?
Uh, I don't think so.
Okay, someone said that you were sitting there for a little bit?
Nah, it was just the light.
Okay. Do you have anything to drink while you were at your friend's house?
No.
Nothing to drink?
No.
Okay. So, we just wanna make sure you're okay to drive more than anything else?
I'm fine.
Okay.
I literally live down the block.
Where do you live? Is your house for sale?
Yes, it is.
Yes, I saw it recently.
I'm buying a new one on...
Here's what we'll do. This is pretty even right here. Whatever you do, just put your feet together and just keep your hands down to your side. Alright? I see you're wearing glasses. Do you have astigmatism or...?
I do have astigmatism, yeah.
You do have astigmatism, okay.
You wanna take them off?
Yeah, can you take them off?
Yeah.
So, what I want you to do with your eyes and your eyes only.
Mm-hmm.
Just follow the tip of my finger. Alright, do not move your head. Follow the tip of my finger with your eyes and your eyes only.
So, the flashlight is like in my face, so...
Continue to follow the tip of my finger. There, back. Kill your front lights. Now, kill your front lights. Did you have any issues following the tip of my finger with the lights?
No, I mean, when the light flashed right in front of my eye, yeah, but other than that...
Just the flashlight?
Yeah.
Okay. So, do you have any issues with, uh, your legs, your knees, any part of your lower extremities?
No.
Anything that would prevent you from doing a walking test?
No, that's fine.
Okay. So, here's what we're gonna do next. This is called the walk and turn test. Alright, I'm gonna explain the instructions to you and I'll demonstrate, and then you'll demonstrate the test for me, okay? So, what we're gonna do first is have you take a couple steps back. So, what I want you to do, I want you to pretend there's a line in front of you. I want you to put your left foot on the line, place your right foot in front of it with your right heel touching your left toe. And you're gonna keep your hands at your side. Hold on, I didn't tell you to begin.
Oh, sorry.
No, you're gonna listen to the instructions and then I'll demonstrate and then you'll...
Okay.
You'll demonstrate, okay? So, I want you to get in this position with your left foot on that imaginary line and your right foot in front of your left foot. You're gonna be in a heel-to-toe manner. Your hands are gonna be down at your sides. Alright? You're not gonna begin until I tell you to do so. You understand so far?
Sure.
Okay. When I tell you to begin, you're gonna take nine heel-to-toe steps on that line. It's gonna look like this. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine.
I got you.
Okay. And return nine heel-to-toe steps, alright? On this ninth step, you're gonna turn around, taking this series of small steps till you're back in that imaginary line. Alright? Then you're gonna go one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. Alright, you got out of the starting position again. I need you to get back in that starting position.
No, no, no. Well, you asked me to keep my hands out, right?
I didn't say anything about keeping your hands out.
Okay.
Alright, I asked you to stay in the starting position. Alright? While walking, you're gonna watch your feet at all times. Keep your arms at your side and count your steps out loud.
Okay.
Once you begin, do not stop until the test is completed. Alright, do you understand the test?
Yeah.
Can you get back in the starting position with your feet heel-to-toe? Alright, hands at your side. Do you understand the test?
Nine in front, turn back around.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, you may begin the test.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
Not heel-to-toe.
Forward.
You told me you understood the test.
You told me nine heel... I don't know what to do after nine. Keep forward?
Did you understand the instructions when I read them to you?
I mean, you said, "Yes," I mean... Nine, okay, you told me to count to nine, right? Okay. Keep forward?
Are you done with the test?
Told me to count to nine and turn forward. Do you need me to keep counting till ten?
Raise his arms. Doesn't count out loud. Done? Take me the steps. Done? Okay. Alright, we're gonna do one more test. This is the one-leg stand test. Do you have any balance issues? Again, any problems with your lower extremities that would prevent you from bouncing on one foot?
I don't.
Okay. Alright, we're gonna get in the starting position, which is just your feet together, heels and toes even. Alright, hands at your sides again. Once again, do not begin the test until I tell you to do so. Do you understand? Okay. When I tell you to, I want you to raise one leg, either leg, approximately six inches off the ground, your foot parallel to the ground. Keep both legs straight and keep your eyes on the elevated foot. So, I'm gonna demonstrate. Thousand and one, thousand and two, thousand and three, thousand and four, thousand and five.
Okay. Thousand and one.
Continue. I didn't tell you to begin the test, sir.
I'm sorry.
I still have to read the instructions.
Okay.
While holding that position, count out loud, thousand and one, thousand and two, thousand and three, and so forth until told to stop. Do you understand the instructions?
You want me to keep counting until you tell me to stop?
Until I tell you to stop.
Gotcha.
Okay, I need you in the starting...
You want me to look down at my toe, count until you tell me to stop?
Mm-hmm.
Gotcha.
Okay, I just need you in the starting position with your hands at your side, not in your pockets.
Okay.
Do you have thirty seconds?
Yeah, okay.
Just use your watch. Just let me know when you're ready. Just keep your hands at your side. Good. Normally, I'd have a watch. I don't have one on tonight.
You're all good, man, it's fine. Just let me know. Alright.
Alright.
Good?
Hands at your side.
Yep.
Alright, you may begin the test.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three...
Raise his arms for balance.
Twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one...
Okay, now you can stop.
Okay.
Didn't you have nothing to drink tonight?
No.
Alright, just give me a beer. Just place your hands behind your back.
Why?
Because you're under arrest.
Come on, man, why?
Driving under the influence of alcohol and drugs.
Did I just pass the test?
No.
Fuck, I'm literally like two blocks away from my house. Ready, guys?
Listen, we're gonna go to the back car over there.
Of course you are, okay.
You smell like alcohol. You failed the test.
How did I fail the test? Can you explain that to me, please?
Everything will be written in the report.
I just literally, you told me to step outside. It smells like something.
Do you have anything in your pockets? Anything that's gonna hurt me, poke me, stick me? Anything like that?
Uh, my cellphone. I don't, I mean, no, my cellphone's in the car. No, nothing.
Okay.
Yeah, it's fine.
Glasses?
Nope. Oh, yeah, my glasses, yeah.
Help. Alright, sir, have a seat. There you go.
What's happened in the car?
Uh, it's gonna have to get towed for the next twelve hours. Stay with him. See if he's got anything in the car. Did you already call for a tow or no?
Yeah, I did.
I got his wallet and keys. They're, uh, I got his wallet and phone. The keys are on the front seat.
You have a house key on it?
Were your house keys on the, the car, too?
Yes, sir.
Uh, do you mind just grabbing them and taking the fob off? So, I got your phone, your wallet, and the house keys are it. Alright, just sit with this. I'll start inside. Six, X headquarters.
Six, X.
On adult male, this location, headquarters, starting 21428.01.
0411.
Hey, everybody, how's, uh, how you doing?
NCIC alert.
Okay. Headquarters, airport. Six, X arriving, 21428.09.
0414.
NCIC alert.
Six, A duty tow is on scene.
0415.
This apartment smells alcohol. I'm just speaking into the body, yeah. Alright, just, uh, let's step up there. So, we got some paperwork to do. Uh, we gotta provide samples and then get you out of here, okay? Take a second left. Stop where the light switches are.
Right here.
Yep. Again, you have no weapons on hand, don't freeze like that.
Not at all, man.
Just a pistol? Any type of jewelry on besides a necklace and a wrist?
No, no.
Just get the glasses, right? Just gonna put those right here. When I tell you to, just place your hand on the wall.
Hands on the wall?
Yeah. Alright, and first? Right here, take off the watch and the wristbands. Uh, hand them to me, please.
What's up?
Say, "Hand them to me, please."
Uh, both?
Yes.
Um, so...
No. The watch and the wristband.
Sorry that you wanted me to cut.
Right there. Alright, the belt as well. You have a layer on underneath. Just, uh, lose the jacket, too.
I'm sorry?
The jacket has strings. Strings can't go in.
Take it off?
Yep. Uh, lose the shoes. You can have a seat in there. Last thing is just you gotta, you gotta flip your shoe, your socks inside out, just so I know it's, there's nothing in there.
You can take them off and...
Yeah, you can have a seat and do that. Like I said, there's some paperwork. We gotta do samples. Quicker we get in, quicker we get out, alright?
You got it?
Yeah, and the other one? Yeah, as long as there's nothing in there, you can flip them back the right way. We're just gonna make sure there's nothing in the sides. Alright, just give me a couple of minutes. I gotta get to paperwork. We'll get started, get you out of here, okay? So, is it the seventh or the eighth?
Maria, in the cat, we're gonna start observation four twenty-five. Alright, so... So, I'm gonna have to ask you a bunch of questions. Some of the things are just gonna be about you. Some of the things are gonna be about tonight. Alright? Uh, there's a long statement on that to read later on, but we're just gonna go one sheet at a time. Alright, this first sheet is just about you, so... Uh, your first name is?
Jorge.
Jorge. J-O-R-G-E.
Yep.
Give a little mention. Before you ask any question, you must advise your constitutional rights. Number one, if your constitutional rights are being silenced, do you understand that?
I do.
For all of them, if you do, a yes or...
Yes.
Number two, and then you say, "Can be used against you according to law." Do you understand that?
Yes.
Number three, you have a right to the presence of an attorney during questioning. Do you understand that?
Yes.
Number four, if you cannot afford an attorney, one will be appointed for you prior to any questioning if you so desire. Do you understand that?
I do, yes.
Number five, you have a continuing right to exercise above constitutional rights at any time during questioning. Do you understand that?
Yes.
This portion. Uh, your signature is in case needed, the answers appear. And then...
Here?
Yep, signature there. Then your printed names. So, you, Jorge Martinez, have read above statements of your rights and have read aloud to you. Do you understand what your rights are? Uh, you're now allowed to answer questions without the presence of an attorney, no promises of repress, other made to you, no pressure or coercion or any kinds of abuse against you.
Correct, yes.
So, one more signature and also...
Here at four twenty-seven, uh, tonight, what kind of alcoholic drinks did you have?
None.
So the rest of these follow-up questions are about alcoholic drinks you had, but you're indicating that?
Yep.
Uh, when did you last eat?
What time is it?
About four thirty.
Nine, ten o'clock, maybe?
Um, ten o'clock. Uh, what did you...
Uh, pad thai.
Never had that one, is it?
Just pre- but, yeah, I've had a pad thai, man, it's excellent.
Four minutes. Two minutes. Okay, this is the Attorney General standard statement, it is a very long, drawn-out statement, but I have to read it in its entirety. Uh, at the end of it, I'm gonna ask you for a simple, uh, answer like the warning statement, so it would be...
Yes.
But anything other than that is, I have to annotate that.
Sure.
Number one, you've been arrested for driving while intoxicated, and you guys a thirty-nine four dash fifty. Number two, law requires you to submit samples of your breath for the purpose of testing to determine alcohol content. Number three, if your record is taking of the breath samples, including the test results, will be made. Upon your request, a copy of that record will be made available to you. Number four, after you've provided samples of your breath for testing, you have the right, at your own expense, to have a person or physician of your own selection take independent samples of your breath, blood, or urine for independent testing. Number five, if you refuse to provide samples of your breath, you will be issued a separate summons for refusal. The court may find you guilty in both refusal and driving while intoxicated. Number six, if a court finds you guilty of the refusal, you will be subject to various penalties, including a license revocation of up to twenty years, a fine of up to two thousand dollars, installation of a mission interlock, and referral to an intoxicated driver resource center. These penalties may be in addition to penalties imposed by the court for any other offense of which you were found guilty. Seven, you have no legal right to have an attorney, physician, or anyone else present with the purpose of taking the breath samples. You have no legal right to refuse to give or delay giving samples of your breath. Number eight, any response from you that is ambiguous or conditional in any respect to my request that you provide breath samples will be treated as a refusal to submit to breath testing. Even if you agree to take the test, but then do not follow my instructions, do not properly perform the test, or do not provide sufficient breath samples, I will charge you with refusal to submit to breath testing. Number nine, I repeat, the law requires you to submit samples of your breath for testing, will you submit samples of your breath?
No.
If the arrested person does not respond, or gives any ambiguous or conditional answer short, I will read the following. Your answer is not acceptable, the law requires that you submit samples of your breath for breath testing. If you do not answer, or answer with anything other than quote, "yes," unquote, I will charge you with refusal. Now I ask you again, will you submit the breath, will you submit the breath testing?
No.
Uh, what's the time now?
Oh, four thirty-five.
Uh, who would be able to come pick you up, so we can't release you on your own from here, we would have to have someone come and pick you up. They would assign liability for you for the next four hours.
Yes, sir, on the way.
Okay, what's your name?
Y S E N I A.
Same last name?
Yep.
So, we're about halfway through, uh, this portion, after this, I have to run the machine and figure your refuse.
That's fine.
And then once that, we'll get your paperwork, store everybody, we'll call, uh, assembly, is she gonna be up by now, or...
I mean, I'm hoping, it's pretty late, so you might have to take a couple of sadder, sure.
Okay, um, other than that, just, uh, we just gotta be doing this observation.
Sure, no problem, thank you.
For this, uh, do you tattoo the, the just the two?
Yes, sorry, uh, one, two, three, four are visible, I have a couple more, but it'll be a little bit of a visible one this time. Uh, three on the right arm, two, uh, one on the left arm.
Uh, just keep open your mouth, just let your tongue out. No crowns, uh, no eyelashes.
Nope, all good, thank you.
Right. As you can be honest, we usually sell things of alcohol, just like the stuff, the change in the car stuff, soon you walk out of the car stuff.
This one?
It's not, it's not anything personal, I mean, we're close to home, I've had people on drives. Unfortunately, it is, you know, saying you're very, you really can't take a chance.
Sure.
So, uh, five minutes, nine minutes, you might just stay in here for some time in the observation. And also the machine.
So forty-six, huh?
Uh, forty-five would be twenty minutes.
There you are.
Do you guys get those for us, um...
These? Yeah, every October, we wear them.
So you get them from the department, or you guys have, so the nice stuffs?
The uniform store, they, they do it for us.
Pretty cool.
Yeah, we, we have like plain ones, but for October, we, we...
Yeah, we just got an email for the PB league that we vote for, and they're like, oh, bring some new pink, I'm like...
Yeah.
I don't know what to do.
It's a whole lot, everybody's doing pink.
I'm like, maybe like a headband or some socks, I don't know.
Yeah, anything, you know, pink's just a color, you can just do whatever.
No, I...
But yeah, these, uh, these started a couple of years, yeah, they started a couple of years ago, so now every October, we wear them.
No, they're helpful, yeah, pretty cool, yeah.
And then in November, we just rip them off.
And then you start with the beards, right?
Yeah. Uh, that's right, I forgot about that, well, we, we, we allow beards anyway, yeah, we allow them year-round.
Yeah, oh, you do, you guys do.
I just can't grow them.
I mean, you can tell.
I mean, you got, I can't do that, so. I can't, uh, I can't grow anything, so, clean shaving's the way to go for me.
I'm good with you, but I, I'm fine, so it's fine.
But yeah, we, we allow them year-round, so, a lot of places are, it's, it's like a generational thing, like the back of the day, it used to be like just clean cut. Some departments still do it that way, state police do it that way. No facial hair, state police, you know, but... There's no reason for us not to, I mean, it doesn't make you better or worse at your job, you know?
It doesn't.
So, but yeah, every October. So, pink everything all month.
One more minute.
Is it forty-five or forty-six?
Forty-five, twenty, we'll continue to, uh, this.
Yeah. What'd you say you did again?
I'm sorry?
For work?
Um, I work for a tour operator, it's called Smart Tours, um, I mean, it's really making it like a long story short, we just do, uh, tours worldwide, so one of the...
Oh, like a travel, yeah, okay.
Yeah, South Africa, Europe, whatever, we have tours, you guys sign up.
It's be easier for you guys to tour, right?
I'm sorry?
It must be easier for you to tour then, cause you got the inside connection, right?
It is.
That's why you said you went to Thailand?
Oh, Thailand was great, yeah, I've been there, it's amazing.
Yeah?
Yeah, beautiful, beautiful country, um...
Not as tight.
Home sucked.
Yeah.
Was not a great time to be on the street, but, um, no, we're rebounding, we're rebounding, so, yeah.
It's a couple of years gone now, so...
Yeah, 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 but I mean...
We're pretty much all back to normal, I mean, here and there, you got...
Yeah, people still get a little freaked out.
Yeah.
About everything, but, yeah.
Yeah, there's, I, I traveled, I had no problem, you know?
Yeah.
And other countries, you know, you see people just not even wear a mask or anything, it's not even like it happened.
Yeah, there's a lot of countries that depend on terms of...
Yeah.
Dollars, so they, they don't, they don't wanna be difficult.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So that's all their revenue.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Not Thailand, no, I mean, they're pretty much doing their own thing.
It's a big part of the revenue.
Is it?
Oh, yeah, I mean, yeah.
I figured like they were like up and running on their own, like, you know, didn't care about tourism, yeah.
They do, but they make big dollars, like Koh Samui, Phuket, I mean, yeah, people go, they spend a lot of, a lot of dollars there, so...
There's a lot of history there, so...
There is, yeah.
I heard, I heard it's gorgeous.
It's beautiful, it's beautiful, and the food, top-notch, so...
Asia's just a long flight away, you know, so...
And if you're not doing like first class, which I didn't do, it's... You're in the way with a sore back, sore feet, the whole lot.
You might as well just knock out and wake up when you're there, how long's the flight?
Sixteen hours, depending if you're not connecting, it could be pretty long, yeah, or you could connect in Hong Kong, and then...
I was about to say, I don't even know where to connect, cause it's like so far away.
Yeah.
Japan's on the bucket list.
Me too, never been there yet, but it's on the bucket list, so, yeah.
China too, I mean, you know, I don't know how travel is in that side of the world, you know, there's a lot of places that I'd like to go, but...
Yeah.
I don't know how travel, like, where, like, you know, anybody could go anywhere pretty much, but like, I don't know, tourists, I feel like certain places, it's like a little harder.
Yeah, China just reopened, I mean, people haven't been, yeah, people haven't been there for a while, my company's not doing it until next year.
It's probably a safer bet, yeah.
Yeah.
So Japan, Japan's on the bucket list, uh, Europe's nice.
Yeah.
Europe's very nice.
Yeah, I've done the Royal River, which is really great, you should like answer them, do all your way down to France, it's beautiful.
Yeah.
So, it's a good time.
I haven't been to... Didn't go to England, didn't go to Ireland.
London is...
Missed out, who knows yet?
If I ever win the lottery, I'm buying a house in London, like...
Like every, everywhere is like just trains, so easy to get around country to country.
Yeah, you go like England, France, Italy, all of them.
Germany one day, and then you get, it's crazy, never seen anything like it, not like here.
No.
Well, like, the countries there... Well, like, the countries there, excuse me, countries there are like states here, I guess, like, it's easy to get to.
For sure, yeah, and we have a lot to see here, but a lot of Americans don't have passports, which is a problem, so, I mean, yeah, that's an issue in itself, but...
Yeah, I mean, I don't even think, my parents used to travel back in the day, I don't even think they needed them back then, like, I don't think they had them, like, they went on cruise, like, I don't think they needed it.
Yeah, no, yeah, today you need like passport, a license, a site certificate, you're not, yeah.
Yeah, the first time I ever left, I went to Canada.
Okay.
So, I was like, petrified, I was like, I need to get my passport expedited, I don't know, and it turns out, they, they like glanced at it, and then they gave it back, they're so easy.
Yeah, they don't care, yeah.
It's just like America over there, it's just smaller and cleaner.
Yeah.
And a lot of more people speak French.
That's true.
Everything's French over there, it was nice, though.
Yeah.
To Toronto, um... Where else, Montreal?
Montreal, yeah, Quebec, Quebec was really...
Yeah, I haven't gone there yet.
If you see the old city, it still looks like back in, yeah, you can do the old city, it's like, super European, it's still a few Europeans, so, yeah.
It's like, well, they were part of the, weren't they part of the UK for a little while?
I mean, historically...
Yeah, they're, they're underneath the monarchy.
Yeah, they're still Commonwealth, so, yeah, we still like, yeah.
And the money system over there is weird, like, they just round up or round down, it's, they don't have pennies.
No, they don't.
They, they have like the big two-dollar coins, and then the dollar coins is strange.
Yeah, just like the US, the US, they're rich and poise.
But they take American money anyway over there, in Toronto, they do.
Everyone takes, who wouldn't?
That's what I've learned, everywhere accepts American money, or a lie, you know, there's some countries, they're worth more than ours.
Better exchange rate.
Yeah, that's true, too.
I mean, Ecuador takes the dollars, yeah, yeah.
I gotta do Central America soon, like Costa Rica and stuff, yeah.
Costa Rica, very nice.
I heard it's like, very, it's a very good trip over there.
Yeah, they don't even have to send you army.
Really?
Yeah, they're very calm, they, they take the dollars, so you don't have to exchange your money. You could just go with the US dollar, you're fine.
I didn't know that Canada took US money at first, so I just played it safe, and I tran, I exchanged a lot of money anyway, but I ended up bringing most of it back, and then I transferred it over, because like, at the time, a dollar American was a dollar twenty in Canadian, so like, you get an extra twenty cents, like, take it a hundred, you transfer a hundred dollars, you get a hundred twenty Canadian. So, but everything's, it's, it all balances out anyway, so it's not like you're getting a deal, you know?
I mean, in Thailand, you could literally get a deal, like...
Do they take American money?
They do, but I mean, I think right now the exchange rate is like, every thirty dollars is like one, you know, yeah, it's ridiculous, you're probably like nothing.
That's outrageous.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Yeah, traveling's fun, I didn't do it till I was older, so, it's fun. A lot of places to, on the bucket list, but I'll get there one day.
There you go.
Just wrapping up a couple of paperwork things, and then, see if I can get you a ride here.
Would I have to pick up my car?
Hmm?
Would I have to pick up my car?
It got towed to, no, we'll give you all the paperwork for that and everything. You can't get it for twelve hours, though, so, four PM tomorrow. So you come here first, he'll, we'll explain this to you again, but come here first, you get what's called a tow release, it's a piece of paper authorizing the tow company to release your car, and you're not able to get that until four PM, so, we'll explain that to you again.
Time now is four fifty-five, we'll be able to submit, so we're gonna stop the observation.
I'll get a new one, I kind of...
Yeah, that's what she meant, so, uh, so paperwork at this point is done, we'll collect your stuff, we'll call your wife, and then get you out of here, she's got to sign it for you, I think that makes no difference for any, anything else in there. Well, uh, as soon as she's here, we'll get you out, get your stuff, and get you out of your way, okay?
Thank you.
Let me shut this.
Yeah.